Recording in progress.
Good evening. It is October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and we are calling the Groton Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. Roll call. We have everybody present. Calendar and Communications. Counselor Merritt, do you have anything you'd like to share? Could you move your microphone down?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Counselor Portalan?
Thank you. I just wanted to send my condolences to the family of the teacher, Mr. Fleming. I didn't report on that at the last meeting as I ran out of time. I did attend the service and it was, you know, pretty heavily attended. Both my sons had Mr. Fleming when it was West Side Middle School and, you know, he was a dear teacher to many students. There were students that maybe didn't connect with many, but there was a way that Mr. Flemings was able to connect with them through sports or, you know, quick basketball game or what have you. And I just know that the community is still, you know, to the staff and community as well as past and present students that are still, you know, grieving the loss and just, you know, I wanted to make sure that I did say something about that. And obviously to the recent victims of the fire, it's been reported that someone also has passed from the fire, but just the seventy-five-something families that were displaced. And, you know, I, you know, am thankful that there were not more losses. And thank you to our first responders for their work and helping out the families. So, again, hate to report on loss, but, you know, just want to send my condolences. Also attended a Board of Ed meeting the last time around that I didn't report on. And busy talking to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also am deeply concerned with the seventy-five folks who are displaced at the moment. If anybody's listening and you want to help, Red Cross. Call the Red Cross and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Burt, they can also help and donate to Groton Human Services?
Yes, and those in need can, of course, reach out to us.
Okay. That's it. Thank you very much.
Counselor Russ?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My condolences go out to the family of the woman who passed in the fire and to the seventy-five families who are currently homeless. Our thoughts and prayers are with you, definitely. This is a horrible time. I know a lot of people have reached out interested in how they can help. Please reach out to Groton Human Services. If you need help, please contact Groton Human Services. They're collecting food, gift cards, cash, cleaning and hygiene supplies right now for the families. I want to just give, you know, a moment to reflect on that. That's, it was a horrible tragedy in our community this weekend. I want to say thank you to the City of Groton Fire Department, the City of Groton Police Department, everyone who gave mutual aid, Groton Ambulance Association, everybody who was involved. Thank you for what they did. American Red Cross for being there and the Salvation Army also for being there and all of the help that they gave this weekend. On another note, I want to say that I attended the Law Enforcement Night Friday night at the Groton Lodge of Elks with Mayor Franco, Counselor Parker, Pacino, Jones, Good. I don't think I missed anybody. It was a really nice night. Congratulations to the Town of Groton Police Officer Sharif Afifi, who was our Officer of the Year here in the town, and to the City of Groton Detective Division, who were honored for the City of Groton. And just a big thank you to the Groton Lodge of Elks for always giving a wonderful night for our law enforcement. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Likewise, my sympathies go out to the victims of the Groton Tower fire. And I think Counselor Russ gave us a good outline of what's available to help in that situation. I was also, excuse me, really pleased to go along with all of the counselors that Counselor Russ mentioned, too, the Law Enforcement Night and for Officer Afifi, who is also one of our two community officers. Congratulations to him on Officer of the Year. And it was a very nice event. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
Thank you. I echo all of my other counselors and Burt's feelings regarding the loss and the tragedy involved with the Groton Towers. So my prayers and thoughts go out to all those affected. And as Bruce Jones mentioned, Counselor Russ did a great job displaying and providing all the details around that. So hopefully everyone can participate and help them out. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Good?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to extend my sympathies to all those who were affected by the fires at Groton Towers this past weekend. And thank you, Counselor Russ and Counselor Pacino for bringing up how people can help or if they're looking for help, who to look for. I appreciate that. Also, on a different note, I'd like to thank everybody who attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony of the Groton Pump Track. Dan Gajewski, Representative Andre Pumgardner, Brian Kent, Mayor Franco, Juliette, Counselor Parker, myself, Mr. Chad Frost, and also Bridge Market for supplying amazing pizza. I got to ride the track. It is scary, challenging, but a lot of fun. And I appreciate it a lot. Thank you. That's all.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My condolences to the family and friends affected by the fire. Thank you to all of the first responders. Everyone came out and supported each other. Mutual aid is very important to have those in place. And thank you all for your hard work in trying to get the fire out and doing a great job. Thank you to the Red Cross, who is our mutual aid partner when things like this happens. On that note, I'm going to switch topics. So, again, my fellow counselors did mention the Law Enforcement Night, the Pump Track. Congratulations to both events. It was a well-attended event at each one that night before and the next day. I know there was many kids that were very anxious to use that bike, Pump Track, and more power to you all. You guys are very daring. That's the word I want. So that is all I have to report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I also received various communications, but I would also like to discuss the Groton Towers, the fire this Saturday night. I send condolences to the family of those who lost their loved one in such a tragic event. And my thoughts and prayers go out to all those who are displaced from this event. I'd like to thank our first responders and mutual aid. That evening, I had contacted the city mayor and offered assistance from that I would reach out to town counselors if they were in, if they needed our assistance, because they were opening up the municipal building and they were going to be setting up to take people there if they had nowhere else to go. And I had offered to contact counselors if they hadn't, town counselors, if they had needed any kind of assistance. But though they had the Red Cross and the Salvation Army, we're going to be taking care of all of that, is from what I understand. Today, we received an update from Mr. Burt regarding some of the issues that he has found out. Could you give us an update on what you found out today?
Sure. And for those interested in donating, we have posted several times on Facebook. And if you just go to our website, you'll see information there about donating or seeking help. Kim Turk, the Human Services Director, she'd actually reached out to Red Cross and to the regional manager for Groton Towers. Red Cross reported that the night of, they provided medical support, mental health support, wraparound services, referrals, some clothing, food snacks, bags. They also provided some limited financial assistance to those who had major physical damage to their apartments. Red Cross is trying to connect with every family on the list, about halfway through the list, just see if there's anything else they need. Let's see, the shelter was only open for one night. People had found other locations by the next day. It sounds like to live there at Groton Towers, you did have to have renters insurance. And part of that is you can get a hotel room and get reimbursed. So people have started, several people have already started submitting into that. There's also, Groton Towers has a few, several sister buildings in the area that people, that could be used with some vacancies to put people in. So that's out there also. Let's see. Inspections are happening now because some of the rooms are being checked just in case. So some people hopefully will be able to return soon. But the inspections are ongoing now. We'll know more soon. And other than that, Kim had encouraged both Red Cross and Groton Towers to, management to encourage everyone to reach out to us for any aid they may need.
Appreciate that. So let me confirm what I heard you say, at least some pieces of it. The renters were required to have rental insurance. Is that correct?
That's what we've been told, yeah.
Okay. And the builder and owners have additional space in other buildings that they own to potentially house all of them if they cannot get back into their apartments. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I appreciate your update.
Point of information?
This is my counsel.
Can I ask a question about what he's presented after you're done? If that's what I...
Your question?
Sure. It was brought to my attention, there could be military families in these apartments. My son had reached out to me. And I was just curious, was there anything on the list? Because I know the Navy offers a lot of support. Has any military families been identified and have those services been offered as well?
I don't know who's been identified. I haven't seen that list.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to see, and I didn't know if that had been kind of conveyed because there's a lot of military families who stay within those apartments. So just want to make sure that that resource has been tapped into to help those families. Thank you.
All right. So I appreciate the update. It's a lot of good information. I hope that many of the renters do have insurance and that would help ease some of the burden on them. Doesn't make any of this easier, but having to deal with a situation, but I do feel that having insurance to potentially replace some of your lost valuables would be, help offset some things.
And I definitely want to encourage people, not everyone may have the money upfront to pay for the hotel and get reimbursed. We're certainly there to help with that.
Right. And that is not something that the council has to do. That is something that they would contact the town directly.
Correct. Human Services Department, yes.
They would be able to help.
Yes, and they prioritize to meet the needs of anybody calling from there.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on to approval of minutes. Counselor Parker, would you like to take that one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I make a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. I so move.
Second, Jones?
Moved by Parker, signed by Jones. I'm not seeing any hands. We'll take a vote on two zero two five dash nine three six, September third, two thousand twenty-five minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. The pass is nine to zero to zero. All right, up next is our new business. Two zero two five dash nine three seven, Nature Everywhere Grant for the Board of Ed. This is in our packet on page eleven. Counselor Good, would you like to take that one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item twenty-two-five dash three, nine three seven, excuse me, Nature Everywhere Grant for the Board of Education. I move to recommend a resolution to apply for and accept the Nature Everywhere Community's Catalytic Grant Program in the amount of fifty thousand dollars and to refer to the RTM per Rule six point five point three.
Second? Moved by Good. Second, Ms. Portalan?
And Mayor, we do have Ben Moon in person as well as Shannon Weigle online, if there's any questions.
All right, great. Thank you. Counselor Portalan?
Thank you. Definitely think this is a great opportunity for our community. I think children do need access to nature and I think this is wonderful. My question is, is this going to be primarily done in elementary or middle school or across all grade levels, K through twelve? I just didn't know if this grant was specific to a certain grade level or, that was my question.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Ben Moon. I'm the STEM and Magnet Programs Coordinator, K five for Groton Public Schools, and a member of the GO, which stands for Get Outdoors, the Go Groton team. So Counselor Portalan, to answer your question, the grant, our grant budget that we submitted was mostly for elementary. So it's got some funding in there for all five of the elementary schools. But we did include a little bit, there's been some plans to do a, like a nature trail on the Groton Middle School campus. So we've got some funding in the grant to support that effort as well.
Thank you. Do we know if this is going to be an ongoing grant that you guys can apply for each year or is it kind of like a one and done?
This one's a one and done, yeah. This is, we're at the end of our two-year cycle with the Nature Everywhere Initiative. You might remember, we presented to you, maybe it was about a year and a half ago, we were awarded a seed grant at that time in the amount of about forty thousand. And this was kind of our next, our next project as far as that initiative, so. But the group still will continue to meet even though we're at the end of our cycle with Nature Everywhere and continue to look for other opportunities to apply for funding for these types of projects.
And my last question is, as far as the grant, you answered the one question about looking into other possibilities. There might be some other things that are different names out there.
Yep.
The programs that you've been able to initiate based on the grants, how will you be able to keep those forward once this last grant is done?
Yeah, so with our seed grant money, we hired a youth organizer and we used some of that funding to hire interns from Fitch as well. And really, the purpose of that funding was to do community outreach. So we held a number of community outreach events over the last year. We had a stakeholders event at Project O. We did an event at Branford Manor. We did a bilingual event in partnership with Children First Groton at the Senior Center. And so all that work really led up to two things. One was the Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights, which I believe John Reiner presented to you all over the summer, and then the ability to apply for this Catalytic Grant. Like I said, the team is committed to staying together and continuing to meet, identifying new funding opportunities. It's actually been a really great experience, you know, to be able to collaborate across our different, you know, spheres of influence. We have Groton Open Space Association, we've got the schools, we've got Planning and Development, we've got Parks and Rec, and just kind of being able to get together as a group with a common interest on a regular basis. You know, you share ideas, you, you know, help each other with each other's initiatives. So I think that will kind of keep the momentum going, just that commitment to continue to work together.
Yeah. No, I think it's, you know, very vital and I think it's like retraining the way we think. I just think when I was growing up, it was just understood that nature was everywhere and that kids went outside. I mean, even if it snowed, you got to play in the snow. You'd put your snowsuit on. If you brought snow pants and snow boots, you played in the snow. You could build snowmen and sled. It was like part of recess. And then it was like, everybody did the blacktop, you know, like, kind of like changing that. And I just think that it's a mind, you know, set, like, because in future, it may not cost a ton of money just to kind of get kids back into where we used to be. And so hopefully this will, you know, but there's a lot of need. And I think these grants exist on urban areas where some kids have never been hiking, never done those things. Maybe it's not something their parents are into. And so it's so nice to have the opportunity for that exposure and hearing that thrill when a kid gets the opportunity to experience nature in a different way than they were exposed to perhaps. So I'm very excited and hopefully maybe there's some other funding revenues that are available. I'm not sure if there's any, you know, to contact our state reps as well. Maybe there's things, I know they've donated to different sporting events. I don't know if it meets the criteria or not for this, but I mean, definitely worth asking and see if there's any funding. But good luck and thank you for all that you do.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Counselor Russ?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you for going after this funding continuously. You have made a great effort between you and Shannon to get kids outside again. And that's huge. Just a question, you set a trail at the middle school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then can you explain nature-based playground equipment? What does that mean?
Sure. So kind of a couple different ways. You can have playground equipment that's actually made out of natural materials. And you can have playground equipment that's nature-inspired. I'll work with Sam, we'll work with Sam and his team to make sure we meet safety requirements and any specs from the Board of Ed equipment. But really, the idea is to get kids connected to nature. So we've identified some things like obstacle courses that are made out of, like, log stumps. And things like sensory tables where kids are, you know, playing in sand and digging. And so there's a bunch of stuff out there, but it's really just all about getting kids connected to their surroundings.
I love that. Thank you so much for doing this. And if you need help with the trail, give me a call.
Thanks.
Love to do it again.
Yeah.
All right, I'm not seeing any more hands. I love that it doesn't take a match. And I always like grants. So thank you very much for going for this. And with that, we'll take a vote on two zero two five dash nine three seven, Nature Everywhere Grant for the Board of Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. The pass is nine to zero to zero.
Thank you all for your support. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Thanks for being here to answer questions. Oh, okay. Up next is going to be the Town Council meeting date. This is number, I'm sorry, I don't have the updated version, but Counselor Russ is sharing her packet with me. It is two zero two five nine four five, the Town Council meeting date. This is for Counselor McBride. Before you read, I would like to make a, just to say this. It is a motion in our packet, if you would like to read it. And it does not take a vote, but a consensus of the council. This does not have to go to the Town Council for finalization. So this is just about changing a date. Counselor McBride, do you have that one?
I have the one that says motion.
Yeah, you can read the motion. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Two zero two five dash two nine one, I'm sorry, two zero two five dash nine four five, excuse me, Town Council meeting date. I'd like to make a motion to move the November third, two thousand twenty-five Town Council meeting to November fifth, two thousand twenty-five due to the November fourth election.
We don't need a second because it is not, we're not going to actually vote on it. We're going to take a consensus of this. So we're changing, the request is to change the meeting from Monday to Wednesday, the fifth, correct? From the third to the fifth. Okay. Counselor Portalan?
It sounds good in retrospect, but for me, I just know the day after the election can be pretty tiring. And then to come to a meeting late at night and stay late. I mean, I'm all for it, but I just want people to, you know, keep that in mind, too. The day after is actually, I'd rather come the third, to be honest with you. The day after is, the fourth can be a long day. And so I don't know, I guess the question is, since, you know, I don't make the agenda, is there some time-sensitive pressing items? I guess this would be my determining factor, then that would make sense. But if there's really not much going on, I only can speak for myself, it could be, we've canceled meetings in the past, even last minute, that I just, if there's nothing, you know, really to pull us all in, it might be nice not to have to have that. It'd be nice to be home early and get a good night's rest that night after. So that's my thought. But open to suggestions, open to hear from other counselors. So I guess the question is, is there a lot planned coming on that date? Do we know? I guess, do the mayor, do the town manager?
Well, it's a Town Council meeting, so it's typically what we have approved during this month. So the items like on tonight, we have the Nature Go Anywhere Grant. Well, that's actually going to be, that will be on there. Groton Ambulance, things of that nature. I mean, it all depends on what we have at our next meeting as well.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, whatever you guys want. I mean, it just, it could be, if it was like in the middle of the day, it might be nice. But with it being like later at, you know, six thirty start, it's, it might be nice to move it to another day. But that's just my thought. But I can go either way. I'm happy to be here.
All right. No other comments from anybody? I mean, I'm good with changing it to the day after. So is there anybody that would be opposed to doing this at this time?
Opposed to, I'm sorry, say it again?
Changing the date, if anybody is opposed to it.
I guess I'm kind of opposed to it.
So I would assume that everybody else is okay with it. And so, Mr. Burt, it seems as though there is a consensus to move this to the fifth, Wednesday, the fifth. All right. Up next is two zero two five dash nine three three, the Sutton Park Progress Report. This is in our packet on page twelve, and we are going to get a presentation. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Good evening, everyone. Chad Frost, Chad Frost, National Architecture, on behalf of the Park and Rec Department, since Mark Burt cannot be here. So trying to give you the update of where we're at with Sutton Park. As you all know, we did go out to bid in Mark's referral. Basically, there's about three million dollars left in funding right now through a bunch of different sources. The low bid that we got in, we did get several bids. They ranged from about four point seven, excuse me, to eight million dollars. The low bid was Weiss Construction, which is a local contractor that is very capable of building a park like this. They just finished building the overlook, up the Uncas Leap Overlook in Norwich. So very capable company. However, four point seven million is quite a bit over the about three million dollar budget. So we've been working with them to value engineer the project, removing some items, changing some materials, changing some details to try to get us down to within the budget. So what I'm here tonight to do is basically run through what those were so you're aware of what we've negotiated with them. And then there's a couple of options that if you wanted to add more money back into the project to do above and beyond what we have for that three million dollars of funding, we can discuss it. So we bid it out in two different pieces, basically. The skate park is one bid and then the rest of the park. So I'm kind of going to talk them through that way. For the skate park, we removed some things, like there was a curved pergola that was a custom-made thing right at that entry. It was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that was pretty easy to remove. There was a shade structure that we removed as well. However, I'll also note that there's three new shade structures that are part of the park that are still going in. So we removed a couple, but there's still three going in the park.
Point of information?
Yeah.
Do you have any of this, just for my processing, that we can visualize or present up there?
I brought a plan, just if you want to, I can point out where those things were.
Do you have the list, maybe in an email, or that we can put up online, up on our screen to kind of view?
No, I just was summarizing what Mark had in his referral and then getting to the two major points.
Okay, I just...
So I was just trying to run through that fairly quickly. But there were some, so there were some details, like for example, there was a retaining wall that we changed a detail from poured and placed concrete to a mafia block style wall. There is a detail that we changed from a deep footing to a frost protection with some foam details like that. Changed some details as far as some of the rebar spacing, some clarified some questions. And then the one big change or reduction from the skate park was the bowl. So there is an existing bowl on this end of the park. That's the really big, deep, it's like a swimming pool. And it was built incorrectly thirty years ago. There's a puddle that forms in the bottom of it. It's very big and deep and difficult to ride. We removed that in order to get to the budget. And that was about an eighty thousand dollar line item by itself. So that's one of the options to talk about with you tonight. But in order for us to meet the budget, that was one of the things, the biggest thing that we removed from the skate park. As far as the rest of the park goes, kind of the value engineered things, is we did remove the basketball court. We removed pavilion. There were some benches that we swapped out, the... We removed pavilion. There were some benches that we swapped out, the stile of the bench, and saved quite a bit of money. The curbing, we went from granite curbing to precast curbing, so we've done a bunch of things like that. Switched from pavers to concrete in a couple places. One of the big numbers was there was a bathroom proposed. That bathroom was custom-designed to be custom-built. It's just a two-stall bathroom, so two doors each. We could switch that to still get a two-stall bathroom, but it's a prefabbed concrete building that is just craned into place, fully plumbed and everything ready to go. Saves us about $150,000.
I don't know if this is the very latest one, this is the latest?
That's perfect. Yep.
But it's up there in case you, hopefully you can see it on your screen, too.
That is the same plan I brought, so that's perfect. Thank you. So, most of those things, we were able to get quite a bit of savings through all those little value engineering. And then the biggest change, if you will, within the park portion was the playscape itself. So, and I love to hear the nature-based play. We definitely encourage that as much as possible. Part of that is what we're trying to do here at Sutton Park. The, remove that big plastic playground, put it in with wood structures. Use, we have a boulder wall that kind of goes up the hill. The slide's built into the hillside to come down the hill, and there's logs to climb on and things like that. So, within your packet, you should have all received the paper that looks like that. Basically, it's a difference of two different manufacturers is where we're at. The play equipment on the left-hand side, the proposed Earthscape equipment, so Earthscape is the manufacturer. That's what we had in the original bid documents. You can see the play structure itself at the very top, a couple of pictures of that. And then we had a secondary structure, which is the Tweety Bird structure, and then some additional play equipment, and the swings at the bottom. We have found a comparable manufacturer, Compan, which supplies, obviously, equipment all over the place as well. They have a similar one, so you can see what their play structure could look like on the right-hand side. Again, log with rope courses and things like that. It's just a little bit smaller, right? The details aren't quite as refined, it's a little bit smaller, but we can save substantial money. Their secondary playscape is a little bit more traditional versus the Tweety Bird there with the little slide and smaller structure. I do like their wobble board and their spinner. I think that's a great addition that we didn't get with the Earthscape, and their swings are very comparable to the same. So, if we switch from the Earthscape equipment to the Compan equipment, we save about $100,000. And so, basically, what we're coming back to tonight is most of those changes we think we've made as we've negotiated with the contractor gets us back down to that original budget with the two big changes of removing the bowl from the skate park and changing the play equipment from Earthscape to Compan. And then within Mark's referral, he kind of listed, obviously, you can approve it with proposed changes, approve it with the deletion of the playground, or add some additional money in, the $80,000 for the bowl, for a total of $180,000 if you wanted to do the bowl and the playscape as originally designed. So, I think that's my quick summary of the numbers. We were very happy, I should just mention, Weiss has been a great partner so far. They're not under contract. We haven't signed anything with them, but they've worked with us for over a month, going back and forth quite a bit through all the different numbers, opening their books up, and being a very willing participant to try to get us into the budget without losing too much of the park. With that, I'm happy to take questions.
Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not a question for you, but thank you for the presentation and your efforts in trying to make everything work. My question through the mayor to Mr. Burt, if possible. Mr. Burt, depending on what option we do, does this have to go to the RTM, too?
The first two, no, but if you were to add funds in, yes. So, if you were to do options three or four, then yes, that would.
Again, thank you for working on this, and this was a goal that we want to get this done so that it's safe for all the residents to use, especially the skate park. Yes, I remember when it was built, I was part of it, oh, not part of it, but my classmates were a part of it. And it does need to upgrade, and we want everyone to be safe during everything, for both sides, the playground and the bowl. So, I know what option I'm thinking of, but I'm going to go with the rest of the council at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Burt, did you have something to add?
Just, yeah, gonna mention my own thoughts, if that's okay?
Please, please do.
I think the bowl's the first priority because the skate park started it all, but I'm in support of the $80,000 to keep a base playground, not the $100,000 personally. But what I see about these changes is everything we're taking out are all small enough to be CIPs over time. You know, we could add little things back in, easy enough, the basketball court and things, so it's a great plan.
And the $100,000 covers what?
$80,000 if you want to keep both the bowl and the base playground. It would be another $100,000 if you want the higher-up playground. It's $180,000.
Thank you. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Frost. This is great. Can you just, I'm looking at the alternatives. So, alternative one is everything that you said. We get it all the way down, we get back to our original budget.
Yep.
And the contract that you're talking to is pretty comfortable, that he can, or they can stay with this, with the budget as it is, if we can, if we approve that. He doesn't see any foreseeable increases coming on option one?
No, we do not foresee any foreseeable additions coming.
So, we could get to our budget and pretty much hang with that budget if we wanted?
Well, we have to, we definitely have to delete things, right? That's what we've been doing. But we think we've reached a point with them where we can hit the budget if we make all those
Make those changes. Okay, and he doesn't, and the things that are left, he sees that those will stay pretty consistent within the budget?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, we have those, like the bids, it's from a bid from a contractor, it's not an estimate. So, we're pretty solid on all that.
On number two, I guess what I want to just ask about is the, is the skate park bowl, just so I understand it. I suppose the removal and repurposing of the existing bowl. So, what does that, let's just look at number three. What does that mean for the removal and repurposing of the existing unused bowl within the skate park?
So, there is the existing bowl, which is, again, in this location. If you're pulling into the park right here, it's, you don't see it from the outside because it drops down about eight to 10 feet. It's a big depression down in there. It's back pitched the wrong way, so the puddle forms in the bottom of it. The skaters don't really use it very much because of both the puddle and the debris that collect in there, and it's so large that only, I'll say, the very best of the best can ride it. The plan that we have in here that we've come up with is actually to, I'll say, partially fill the bottom up a little bit. So, as you're down in the park, you come up a pump bump into the bottom of the bowl, which makes the total bowl shallower, if you will, so more people can ride it. And then it allows us to pitch out the bowl to get proper drainage out of it. Once we do that, we have to demo parts of the sides and put on new caps and stuff like that, so. And there's parts to either side that get demoed, so basically, we just remove that work entirely and stay on budget. But to put that back into the project is about $80,000 just for that one component.
But it's a pretty integral part to a skate park, right, to have a bowl of some kind?
It is, yes, but again, it's there now. It doesn't get a lot of use because of the condition. It was something we heard about from the skaters. They'd love to have it fixed. But when we got down to really having to make hard choices and we were needing to cut things, that was where we were able to save some money because it's still there, it's still kind of rideable versus, there are a couple of other areas that are a lot more of a safety concern, that something really had to be done. So, we chose to keep those in the budget and cut this as something to get to that budget.
So, by yours, what you're saying by removing it, that's removing the parts that are bad, repurposing it is fixing it to be good?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, that's what you mean by that. Okay. And then, and this, the number three includes the sort of option two on the playground equipment?
Correct. It, yes. It is the
Number three is the base playground?
Is
It's the, it is the
It would keep, it wouldn't be using this
It's a cheaper one, which is on the right, the right-hand side.
Yeah, that'd keep the right.
Yeah.
But we still have a playground?
You still have a playground, yes.
So, for the $80,000, we fix the bowl and we swap out
More affordable version of
More affordable thing, and then all the other changes that you've sort of said.
Correct.
And then if you go to $180,000, you would just go to the left-hand side of the page?
Correct.
And everything?
You get the originally designed playscape and the full bowl as originally designed.
And is there anything on, number three, I'm sort of, I kind of like number three, too, because it's, I mean, it seems okay. And at some point, we could upgrade playground equipment. Is there anything that you're removing, like you're moving one of those basketball, is it moving one basketball court or two?
One exists, so we're leaving the one that currently exists. We're just, we were going to add a second one, so we'll remove that for the time being.
Is there anything that you're removing in here that sort of changes the scope of the park, so later on, it would be harder to put it back?
No, that's a great question. No, we've made a very conscious effort to make sure that, you know, we don't pull something from the back that you can never access later.
Okay, so we could, sort of module, we could kind of plug new pieces in?
Yeah, same thing with, I'd say, some of the trash cans, for example, right? We know that we can likely fund those either through NIPS or through CIP, and Park and Rec can probably honestly install them cheaper just with their own labor, so they can buy them and put them in. The contractor will still put the concrete pads in, everything's already ready to have them. But they just won't be physically installed.
Okay. And then my last question is on the bathroom. Why did we not recommend a prefab unit in the beginning?
It's, I'd say extremely challenging bidding environment right now. We've gone all over the map both ways, and in the last few years, we've seen where the site buildings are cheaper, and then we've seen them where these prefab buildings can be more competitive. It just depends on the market at that given moment, it seems like. And so, up until last year, the site-built buildings were more affordable because the prefab ones, they just required a whole lot of work and cranes and extra stuff, and you're still building it. But then the hookups and everything else just seemed to be more complicated. Now, within the last couple of years, and trade labor and some of these other things, the site-built ones have now gone up to where that two-stall bathroom is, you know, almost a half a million dollars, which seems crazy when you think about houses and things like that. But that's, you know, to get it commercial-grade built building, that's what it's about costing. So, when we can get a prefab one, drop it in, still look very nice, still have the same two stalls, you know, it seems right now like a no-brainer.
Still be 88. And just one final question through the mayor to the town manager. Staff had made a recommendation for alternative four, but you're recommending alternate number three?
Personally, yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure it's worth an extra $100,000, but supportive if you want to, but that's my own thoughts.
I think just from what you've said and where you're, and thank you for grinding into it and digging and trying to pull pieces out. Yeah, I think I like number three also, so.
Councilor Good?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. He asked most of my questions, and thank you, Councilor Jones and Mr. Frost. The only other question I would have is the existing playground. I'm not sure what kind of shape it's in.
Pretty terrible.
Pretty terrible.
Yeah.
It's at the end of its lifespan. I saw some kids playing on it the other day. I just didn't know
Yeah.
where it's at. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're all set?
I'm all set.
All right. I'm going to take my turn. The, what is the cost for the additional basketball court?
The basketball court, we removed $78,500.
Hmm, because I drive by in the summertime, that, the basketball court is full of people playing, and that is highly used as well, so. Mr. Burt, how much do we have in the CIP fund balance?
I think around about $2 million, though we're anticipating through enterprise zone dollars, we'll likely replenish that towards the end of the year to tune in a few more million, which will use some towards the extra budget, but it could certainly handle an additional $80,000-ish.
And the cost of the basketball court, does that include the, do you have to put in additional lights? Or are you just using the poles that are there and?
The, I'll say that's a complicated answer. We were replacing the lights. We have pulled them as part of some of this funding, so trying to, I'll have to, I don't know if that $80,000 fully incorporates all of that, the lights we'd have to go back in. I'd have to, would find a way to make it work. We're also working, we're looking for a couple extra things, like there's, just as an example, there's a few lights where we think we can remove a few to get more efficiency, and we're trying to do that just to get a contingency, so if something happens during construction, we have a little bit of balance to be able to accommodate those things. So, I would say, for your question now, I would assume the basketball court is, you know, roughly that $80,000 number, and we will find a way to make the lighting work.
And I'm sorry
We'll find a way to make the lighting work. Either the existing poles will be repurposed in the other direction, or if we can find enough balance within the project to put the new poles on the outside, we will.
So, I thank you for trying to, and getting this down from the 4.7 million down to where it was in budget with these options and changes. I completely appreciate it. I think if we're going to do this, I think, me personally, we put the basketball court in there because, as we know, when you go by, that court is pretty full in the summertime. And I drive by in the evening, and the lights are on, and it's a lot of people out there playing. And I also say the same thing over at the city, at Washington Park. There are people playing there late in the evening, like, having a good time and, you know, just have, playing basketball, so. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to take the leap here, and I'm going to make a motion and put it on the floor. I'm going to put number three on there, but I'm going to read it as this. Approve an additional $160,000 from CIP fund balance for the removal and repurposing of the existing unused bowl within the skate park, enhancing both safety and functionality, and adding the basketball court back on.
Second, Jones?
Point of information?
Your question.
You're missing, could you please add that it has to go to the RTM?
I can add that. I think it's, it's always required, and if you would like it in the wording, that's fine. Then go to RTM, it's 6.5.3. Am I, did I say it right?
Yeah, three.
6.5.3? Look at that. And you have the second?
I have a second.
You agree with the addition?
Point of information?
Your question.
Did you say 60,000?
Hundred and sixty thousand.
Oh, you said a hundred, okay.
I only heard sixty.
Hundred and sixty thousand, I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
Did anybody else have a point of information? Councilor Mayor, you have a question?
Well, I think that
Are you taking your turn, or are you asking a question?
I'll take my turn.
I still have time, I still had time, did I not?
You did, but
I would just put a motion on the floor. Hold on just a moment, please, because I do have people in front of you. All right, so I hope, just from my own experiences of seeing and trying to get this park
Wait a minute, you're talking, and then Matt, don't have your time.
How much do you think I had left?
141.
Okay, thank you. I probably won't even use one, so I would hope that my fellow counselors will support this as we want this park to be utilized, to enhance it back to its glory days, and make it so that our whole community is proud and would like to go there. And I look forward to those days. But I think the basketball court is a major portion of this park that I don't think we'd like to lose over 70, about $80,000 when you're looking at the big scheme of how much this is going to cost. So, thank you. I'm all set. Thank you. Up next, I have Councilor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it looks like if we, if we go with three, we're taking care of the bowl, putting the basketball court back in. Now, as far as the playground, would we be able to do a CIP to enhance the playground at a later date?
Not really. That's my short answer. I mean, what I would say is not easily. The playground's going to be built unless, within the funding cycle, that happens before the contractor's purchasing and installing it. I'd say once this is installed, this is the playground you're going to have for a number of years before it's time to replace it.
I wasn't suggesting replacing it anytime soon.
Yeah. It's not really easy to add on to extra pieces.
Okay.
Now, what I would, I guess, I'll clarify that. The main structure, once that's in, is in. If we wanted to put, you know, if you instructed us to leave some space for an additional structure that could come in the future, I'm sure we could do that.
I like that idea.
Gets a little tricky, but it's possible.
I like that idea, just so we can have that option at some point, later point. All right. Yeah, I think I'm good, I got my questions.
Counselor?
Thank you.
Merritt.
Yes, I'd like to remind basically all of us and those that are watching perhaps of the upcoming question on the ticket about the field at Fitch. And this falls in line with that. If we hold off on these items, they're just going to cost us that much more than has been given tonight. And I think we should get them done while we have the opportunity to put it on the floor, and put a figure on it. Because that, what's happened at Fitch has been going on for years, and now this is where we stand, fourteen million dollars, when it could have been half of that a few years ago.
Thank you. Counselor McBride.
Thank you. I'm in support of Mayor Franco's motion, I think that's a good idea to bring the basketball courts back, and it's been a few years since I've been to a playground, so I don't see a huge difference between these two, you kind of said they were similar, so.
We tried to get them as similar as we could and still save a decent amount of money.
Yeah, so I think I would support this motion, I think it makes sense. The one question I do have, and this is through the mayor, through Comanche Bert, if you can just elaborate on the CIP, because I understood it, but I want to make sure I understand it.
Right now, we have approximately, once we spend the half a million that was approved for the chiller for the PD, we have approximately two million. If you might recall, late last calendar year, we received a chunk of money, and we usually don't receive all our enterprise zone dollars for EB, we usually get a small amount, but last year, they made up, we got a little bit of regular, kind of general fund use money, but the bulk of it came through the Bond Commission at the state. That was the first time we received all our money. We're anticipating, from what we're hearing, that we'll likely get the same this year, so we should get, I think it's, it's either four or five million, I think it's five million, it might only be four, I can't swear to it.
I recall four, four and change.
We'll call four then, yeah.
So that would make it sound like our, our CIP is extremely comfortable, let's say.
Yes, though we do, will use some of that towards the next budget, yeah.
But you're comfortable with, not that eighty thousand, but still a very, a very solid number to have in the CIP, yes, so I'm in support of it, thank you.
Counselor Borland.
Uh, thank you. I guess for me, it's, you know, I'm a big component, I like to be proactive versus reactive, and I find that we wait until our fields and parks are almost like unusable or like become a safety concern, like the safety issues, and I just, I don't know, maybe to the future council or whoever, I just hope that we have a more robust plan as we start to look at improving. It's one thing to improve and dump a ton of money into it, but it's another to make sure we're funding the maintenance throughout the years that aren't popular. If we're going to invest all of this money in it, we need to make sure that, you know, as, after two years, you're resurfacing this, three years, it has a maintenance call on that. Those things need to be funded, or else you just get back to square one in about ten or fifteen years, these, you know. So that's just my thought. So it's, it's a like, nice have, and I'm a full supporter and advocate that our parks do not look like our surrounding communities in the sense that, as it was stated about Fitch High School and all that, so if we fund this, I want people to remember that the upkeep and maintenance, when you have to recock, resurface, rewood, relog, re-this, re-that, we want to keep the park in its glory and not have to fund a major re-overhaul. And so I just, just, just keep that in mind as we're funding and doing these. So we can surely leave this one in, but we have to make sure we're planning ahead, and there needs to be a cycle when we're looking at all of our parks and surfacing across the town. So I just hope that maybe, I don't know, that's another thing. But with that, I can agree that the basketball courts are highly used. I also want to state, I guess through the mayor, through the town manager, the opioid and the cannabis monies did say that there was a component in there that can be used for infrastructure for...
Not opioids, but cannabis.
Cannabis, cannabis, I'm sorry, I don't have my paper in front of me, that's why I said...
There's not much money there, though, if you recall, yeah.
Right, but the point is, it can be used, and we're looking down the line, I'm just putting it on the record, other towns have done it, and it is to be said, the lights are on, youth, number one complaint, nowhere to go. Groton doesn't have a skating rink anymore, there's nowhere to go after hours to kind of hang out and be safe, and it is proven, when you have safe things for youth to do, it's a deterrent from drug use, violence, and other things, and so it is important to fund and, and, and keep our infrastructures up and having more for our youth to do in our community. So just another consideration, it's not a lot of money, but it might be a resurfacing of that basketball court in a few years, or five years, it, money all adds up. Again, I can support, you know, this, have we also, through the mayor, the town manager, and to Mr. Frost, I've seen some towns approve things when things come back later and they ask to do a robust, you know, campaign to fundraise, put the needle out there, hey, this one over our head, throw those red flags out there, let's see who takes a bite. Have we thought about that? That's my question.
There wouldn't be time before the construction, likely, would there? I mean...
Not before the construction?
Yeah, no. It's hard to raise money, and plus, we need over a million, we're doing, we're starting that for Tricentennial Park, you know, that's kind of where that fundraising effort's going to be.
Yeah, because we have, we have issues across the town, in my opinion, so it, it doesn't hurt, right? If someone's like, you know what, I'm going to donate ten thousand to the Sutton Park, if it comes in, it just lowers our numbers, so we can still put it out there that we would be collecting funds, if we don't get them, I'll take my second turn after, I'll ask, thank you.
Mr. Bur, did you have something you wanted to share?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out to the public, you'll see a lot of CIPs for doing things like resurfacing basketball courts, we just did Far Car, we actually, every two years, we walk every playground with our insurance company, looking for any issues. We, you know, we do, we trade out, that slide's starting to crack, we trade it out, we actually do a lot of maintenance to keep up with these, or gets to a point kind of like a used car, where you're like, it might be parts, you can't get the same parts anymore, that playground is twenty years old, or, and that exact thing can't be found, and it's just not worth, you know, you're, you're spending so much, at a certain point, like, okay, we're going to now start focusing on replacing that. So I just wanted to point that out. And anytime we do new structures, we also go out with insurance to make sure we're doing it right and take their considerations, but Parks and Rec actually does a really good job of trying to maintain things.
Counselor Borland.
Thank you. No way in my comments didn't discredit what they do, they can only work with the fund that they're given. So with that being said, what I'm asking is, and I do, I have seen those repairs, but I agree, you get to a point where you can only put a part on the furnace and it's time for a new furnace. So then we should start mapping out that plan sooner, than instead of having this big lump sum thing, meaning, other towns have done it where we knew this park was failing X amount of years ago, we knew Sutton Park was failing X amount of years ago, we knew Aquatic Plains Park was failing, and Fitch was failing, and all these other ones, there could be a robust plan, when you're reaching that point where you know you can't replace these parts anymore, start saying, wow, let's do a big fundraiser, and let's start mapping this out, and that's all I'm asking. It, it would be great, as we said, you know, it's a little too late to try to ask, we already got a fundraising campaign happening for Aquatic Plains, so that can help. There are tons of people willing to donate to communities, companies, families, and again, even twenty thousand that's raised is twenty thousand less, because then when we get down to cutting things, when it becomes over budget, that little bit of money can offset the difference of making the whole project go as it was. So that's all I'm asking, is that we look at it from a, you know, every facility, when we're replacing those pieces, start to project that this thing is five years away from needing a full replacement. That's all. And again, no discredit to Parks and Rec whatsoever about the repairs that they do, like any town, they're only doing what they can do with the budget that they're given, and it does get to a point where you can't Band-Aid it anymore. So that's my hope, and I guess, I don't feel it is too late to ask, I mean, you can still say to people, hey, whatever we vote on tonight, you can still accept money, and if people wanted to donate, I guess through the mayor, through the town manager, couldn't you just add that as a secondary thing? Doesn't mean we'll get a dime.
I feel like that makes...
Let me just, can I just jump in here? That is something like, the town already does, and if you want to do something special, it would have to take the consensus of the council to do it. So I don't want to put something out there from one counselor that may not speak for us as a whole.
I was asking if it could be done first.
Yes.
So that's my question.
Because you've asked, it, it has been answered numerous times about this, and you've brought this up on numerous occasions, and, and it can be done. And Parks and Rec does have a donation link on the website, to donate to parks and to purchase benches and trees and all kinds of other things to donate to Parks and Rec.
My previous time I spoke, they said there might not be enough time now, that's why I was reacting.
You're talking for this specific item?
What I would try to clarify a little bit is, for this particular park, because we need to be under contract with that contractor very, very soon, we need to have the money in place to be able to sign that contract, which is why we're here tonight. I would say if there's members of the public that want to donate to Park and Rec, there is an open donation, they're actively encouraging donations, they're doing activities out of Aquatic Plains, trying to raise money for Tricentennial Park, and instead of maybe donating to this park, which might hopefully after tonight be funded to go out for construction, that's one that definitely needs a lot of money in order to get to the point to where it could be going out to bid as well. So that would just be my personal stance, as, instead of accepting money for this park right now, I would be encouraging people to donate to that park, which needs a lot more work in the future, you know, as, that is one where we've reached the end of life for most of the equipment, we can't get replacement pieces, and as things are failing, they're literally just having to be pulled out, and we're left with holes in the playscape and things like that, because we can't replace it. So it is getting to that point, like this one, and I would say they have been proactive and looked at, a couple of years ago, identified we need to replace this, we came up with some plans, we came up with some budgets, they're doing their fundraising, they're out looking for grants and things like that, but it'll be the next one on the list for sure.
All right, well, thank you for clarifying, I just, again, you know, I just wish we started a little bit sooner, is all, and, but with that, I obviously I support, you know, infrastructure and maintenance of our parks. I could support the extra basketball court, because again, I do believe in youth on that side of town, there's no outdoor basketball courts at Fitch. I'm trying to make this correctly, I think there may be one at the middle school, or did that one get cut when they built that? I can't quite remember, I don't have my notes in front of me. I'm sorry?
There's not one at the middle school.
Okay, because it was, and that one got cut, I believe, because there was a big component of people who wanted, the West Side Middle School basketball courts were heavily used, and when they built the one middle school, folks really wanted a basketball court for the middle school for outside. So on that side of town, I really think, you know, Aquatic Plains Park does not have one, so where is the nearest one unless you go into a pocket neighborhood over, like in, on the water there, I can't think of the name of there.
Tanglewood.
Tanglewood has one.
And there's also one behind the community center.
Correct, but outside of that, it's not, you know, definitely approachable for all, so we'll see what everyone else says, thank you.
All right, Counselor Merritt.
Yes, I just want to reiterate the fact of using Fitch as an example, that if we don't keep up on this and keep after the money, this stuff will fail once more, and the equipment keeps deteriorating while the funding fails. And the funding could go up in cost quite a bit down the road. I think if we lock, lock in what we've got planned now, that will be acceptable by the contractor, then I think that we should do it.
Thank you, Counselor Jones.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say why I was enthusiastically supportive and gave a second for this addition to the, to this project, is that many of us up here have been involved with this for three years, and it's been sort of a labor of love of slowly building all of these funds so we could get to this point. All of us that were here were just blown over by the young men and women who came that night and spoke about this project and what it meant to them, and we were able to take that energy that they gave and put it into ourselves and say, this was really important, and it has sustained us to get this project all the way to here and continue to going, so, so I, I'm fine with it, I think adding the second basketball court, this is the right time to do it, and I was pleased to, to second that, but just to encourage that this is a great addition to our community, updating something that needs it, and glad to support it, so.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the people that came and spoke to us were the skateboard...
Skateboard guy, people, men and women.
Men and women, yeah, that's right. All right, I'm going to take a turn. So I'm looking at the option alternative here, and one particular one stands out to me, it's called the spinner.
Yep.
Is this one of the ones that spins and people are holding on for dear life, and if you let go, you could go flying? I call it the death spinner.
It's not as bad as the merry-go-rounds that you and I remember, but it is, it is an acceptable version of that, right? So this is flushed with the ground, so kids on wheelchairs or mobility issues can roll right onto it. It is a very popular amenity in most modern playscapes right now, and it's small enough that it doesn't spin at a high rate of speed, like the ones you and I remember, which were very big diameter, you can really get them going pretty quickly. This being smaller doesn't go so...
That's why I'm asking about it. I'm just curious as to...
It will spin. And we don't put it on asphalt.
So this one goes pretty good, but you're, you're saying not at the high rate of speed as the one we remember from our youth?
Yeah, correct.
This is in the Gen X playground.
So...
And it has a safety surface, the rubber poured in place, safety surface all around it, flush up to the edge.
Okay. All right then, I'll let that one go, and we'll see how this goes. Because you never know, we could all, as counselors, meet down there someday and take a spin on the spinner. But that one, I want to clarify, and it, and I listened to my fellow counselors, and I'm very excited that they are also, seem to be in favor of the basketball court, making sure we can get that second one in there, so I'm, I'm really pleased to hear that. Counselor Russ.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am in favor of the hundred and sixty thousand dollars, I remember, I was moderator of the RTM, and I don't think I've ever seen so many passionate people come out in favor of something, they were so impressive, and I'm happy to, to definitely support the bowl and make sure that that gets fixed, because that was one of their, their main concerns, but also this, but I will say, I went to a conference once, and they talked about how those spinning things that we all did as children, I think we're all about the same age, was very good on resetting your brains, and that children who didn't play on those things, so our children's generation, didn't have that, so these are really good for your brain. I don't recommend it in our age range, because I feel like that would probably not be good, but anyways, I just wanted to say that, and thank you for bringing the alternatives here, because we really had a lot of choices, and I appreciate that, but I think Sutton Park, we have all committed to this being something that we complete, and thank you for letting us do that and making sure that happens.
Point of clarification?
Your question.
I just wanted to ask, I don't know if we're all the same age, but...
Oh!
I'm only forty-five, I'm probably the youngest one up here, and I just don't, I don't think I'm, yeah. But, okay, we're a range.
I, I take back. For those of us over fifty, we were on this, I don't know at forty-five.
I was on, I was on.
Ouch!
Oh, gravel, I don't remember that.
Remember black.
All right, we're getting a little like, goosey goosey with the meeting here, but I'm going to try and reel it back in. Does anybody else have other comments they'd like to make before I call for the vote? All right, I'm not seeing any, so I'm very excited to say that we are going to vote on two zero two five dash nine three three, Sutton Park Progress, and I'm going to read it out, to approve an additional one hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the CIP fund balance for the removal and repurposing of the existing unused bowl within the skate park, enhancing both safety and functionality, and adding back the basketball court.
Point of information?
I'm in the middle of...
I want to clarify, clarify this question.
And then go to the RTM, six point five point three. I can't take any questions now, because I'm in the middle of...
I just wanted to clarify that the lights were added in there, that's all.
No, I'm in the middle of a vote.
Sure.
Second.
There was a second.
There was already a second, I'm just reiterating it.
Thank you.
Because I'm literally in the middle of the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Very happily, that goes through unanimously, nine to zero to zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Up next on our agenda is two zero two five dash two nine one, the Groton Ambulance Lease Extension for two thousand twenty-five, this is in our packet on page fourteen. Counsel Jones, would you like to take that one?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-291, Groton Ambulance Lease Extension for 2025, to recommend a resolution approving an extension of the lease with the Groton Ambulance through September 30th, 2028, continuing with their $1 per year lease rate, so moved.
Second, Parker. Moved by Jones, seconded by Parker. Mr. Bird, do you want to give us a highlight of anything?
Yeah, it keeps everything status quo, things have been going pretty smoothly, you might remember, we're doing some work there repairing doors and painting the building, should be in really good shape. I touched base with the Groton Ambulance President, Chuck Knickie, and he was good with maintaining status quo, I don't think he's going to make any change. They're good tenants.
I'm not seeing any hands. Counsel Borland.
Well, thanks, because people ask all the time, you know, we have two ambulance companies, one in the town, one in Mystic Side of Groton, one owns their own structure, this one rents, and the discrepancies and the amounts that we receive, but we also give them, you know, a building that we, you know, obviously have to keep up with maintenance per the, you know, agreements that we have to, or we would have to find other companies or what have you. So, I guess, I mean, can you just speak to the dollar?
Well, the council made that change a few years back, there used to be some, a little bit, not much, where there was some, I'm trying to remember, it was not much, maybe a few thousand, if that, maybe only a thousand. The council elected to just do the dollar. And I would say in terms of the differences between the two, there are a wide variety of differences between the two organizations. If you go back and look at our Public Safety Committee meetings that discussed ambulance funding, you'll learn a lot about how they operate, and, you know, it's comparing apples and oranges to compare the two.
All right, I am not seeing any hands. I'm going to call for a vote. On 2025-291, the Groton Ambulance Lease Extension for 2025, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Also passes nine to zero to zero. We are on a roll tonight, everything has been unanimous. I'm going to entertain an adjournment, after this adjournment, we also have to go into a special meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Moved by Russ, seconded by Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. All right, we are, it is...
Madam Mayor.
7:40...
Thank you.
7:44 PM. And I am now calling the Town Council Special Meeting Agenda to Order, it is October 14th, 2025, it is 7:44 PM. Roll call, we are all present. And we have on our consent calendar, 2025-944, Tax Refunds, Veteran Exemptions for Charles Robinson and Joshua Terry. Counselor Russ, would you like to take that one?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-944, Tax Refunds, Veteran Exemptions for Charles Robinson and Joshua Terry. Resolution approving tax refunds, whereas the following for the reasons indicated have overpaid taxes in the amount specified, and whereas the tax collector has recommended the amount to be refunded, be it therefore resolved that the tax refunds indicated below are hereby approved. Loretta as agent for Michelle and Charles Robinson, $3,066.94 for excess payments, and Cotality as agent for Joshua Terry, $2,909.8 excess payment, so moved.
Second. All right, we have that moved by Russ, seconded by Parker. Counsel Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And through the mayor to Mr. Bird, I haven't experienced tax refunds coming to the council before.
Well, it's happened, it's happened in the past, and it's been on a consent calendar. Now, usually it'd be put into our regular packet for the next council meeting, however, with these amounts, we didn't want to make the veterans unduly wait to receive their refund. It does take, though, a vote of the council to, for us to refund it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. We're going to take a vote. On 2025-944, Tax Refunds, Veteran Exemptions for Charles Robinson and Joshua Terry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That also passes nine to zero to zero.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
We have a motion by Counsel Parker, and seconded by Borland. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? It was not a fully unanimous night, thank you very much. We are now adjourned at 7:47 PM.